Morning. Morning. What do you? Good morning. It is nine AM. I will call the order, the March second meeting of the Slade County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Mr. Sparks?
Here.
Mr. Vidrickson? Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Will you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. If everyone at this time, please make sure that all your microphones, phones and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly. I would appreciate it now if Brad, our IT director, could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning, Brad.
Assuming everyone is using the Zoom client, if you select the participants icon at the bottom of the screen, in the lower right-hand corner of the screen, that will reveal a raise hand function. If you select that, that will let the host know that you would like to speak in the meeting.
Okay, well, thank you, Brad. Uh, and at this time, we will move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items not on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll just, uh, go into action items. I mean, at this time, I'm sorry, consent approve agenda. Are there any commissioners at this time would like to change or edit the consent agenda? Hearing no objection will be stand as the approval of prior minutes, approval of tax rule adjustment, approval of the accounts payable and payrolls presented, and approval of public forum agenda as presented. And the consent agenda will stand as approved. At this time, we will move into action items.
Item number one, review of amendment number one to resolution twenty dash twenty-two ninety-seven, review of section six mask mandate. With Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Morning, Jason.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, public. Uh, just soon as Brad pulls up the slides. All right, so this is your update for March second, twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please. So as you can see, the national numbers are considerably less in the last two weeks than they have been in quite a long time. And so that is a very encouraging trend. Uh, we'll see that trend, um, through the next slides. So the next slide, please. Same with the state. Um, I think that's the lowest two-week cases that we have seen in months, um, and that trend continues. Next slide. And the same here locally. If you remember, at one point a couple of months ago, you know, we were averaging a hundred and twenty-eight cases in a couple of days, maybe, if not more. And we have slowed down considerably to where we've only had a hundred and twenty-eight new ones in the last two weeks, um, including three new deaths. Hospital is still holding steady at single digits as far as COVID inpatients and our two-week percent positive rate, um, has dipped down below five percent. So we're looking much better there. Next slide. So looking at the cases per month, um, you can see from that high of December, we have seen and continue to see a significant drop off in cases. Um, I will note that even though we have seen this drop off, we are still seeing cases daily. Um, but they are much, much fewer than they were, uh, even a month ago. Next slide. Uh, same thing with deaths. They have taken a drastic drop off, um, as far as their numbers. Granted, it's only the second of March, but I will take a zero for the month so far on that one, uh, happily. Next slide. Uh, the free testing is still ongoing. Uh, there's the website. Um, it has been, I think, funded for a couple more months still. Um, so if anybody is looking for someone to get tested, um, and they are not symptomatic, looking in need of a doctor's evaluation, uh, they can go to this website and they, uh, and set up the time, uh, to get that done. Next slide. So vaccine, by the end of this week, we should have over eighty-five hundred people that live and work in Slade County vaccinated. Um, also by the end of the week, we should have about half of the over sixty-five that are registered, um, and probably most, if not all, of the first responders, K through twelve and, and city and county vaccinated, which will allow us to start vaccinating the rest of those who are, uh, phase two eligible next week. Um, and because there are a lot of different smaller categories and smaller groups as far as numbers that are concerned, um, we're just going to start working down the list of those that have registered that are phase two eligible. Um, we'll be able to, uh, schedule a large chunk of those each week. Um, something else I want to point out too is the Johnson and Johnson vaccine has been approved by the FDA. Um, it is a one-dose vaccine and we were notified late yesterday that we'll be receiving five hundred doses of that this week. We don't have all of the details quite yet, and our vaccine planning group will be meeting later on this afternoon to begin discussing, um, how we are going to, uh, deploy that vaccine, uh, for the Johnson and Johnson one, once we receive that. Couple of nice things about that one as compared to, uh, the Moderna and the Pfizer, especially for the one dose, is that it can be stored in regular refrigeration. And that it is, for those that were concerned about the mRNA technology that was used to develop the Moderna and the Pfizer, the Johnson and Johnson is more of a standard vaccine, so that should alleviate that concern for, uh, those that felt that that was a barrier. Next slide. So again, if, if you're trying to find out what's going on, we have multiple ways. Uh, you can either sign up, listen to the radio, social media, um, the FAQ Friday videos, um, celine.org. Uh, there's multiple ways to get information out there. Next slide. So as we continue to watch the variants, um, yesterday afternoon, uh, there was a report that there were eight more cases of the UK or the B one-one-seven that were identified in, in Cedric County, um, which puts Kansas up to ten cases of that particular variant. And it's the only one that's been found in, in Kansas at this time, um, and nine of those ten have been in Cedric County. Um, so while this is not something that, uh, yet is a huge concern, I think if we continue the pace of vaccination, uh, we should be able to keep that from really taking a foothold, uh, but we'll continue to monitor, uh, what's happening with, uh, variants, uh, across the US and here in Kansas as well. Next slide. So as far as my recommendations, I think that we still need to continue the mask order for now. It would be, you know, in a much better position if we get to a spot where we start having chunks of time without daily cases. Um, and I think that's still going to be a little while. As far as, uh, there's a YouTube video that I, if Brad is able to pull it up, um, Salina PD brought out their drones and did a, a couple of drone walkthroughs of the vaccination site. So if somebody hasn't been out there, um, to be able to see the site and is curious about how things work, what to expect when they get out there, um, this video will basically walk them through the entire process. So Brad, if you're able to play the, the first, uh, minute of it, it's about five minutes long. And it's on the Slana Media Connection YouTube, uh, page as well.
Are you not seeing it now?
No. There we go. There is audio. I'm not sure if it comes through with this, uh. So I'm guessing the audio must not be coming through on the, on the Zoom. However, Haley did a fantastic voiceover of the process and, and the walkthrough and what to expect. Um, each step of the way for, um, anybody that might have concerns about, um, how it's going to work, how long they're going to be there, you know, if they have any type of mobility, um, issues while, uh, they're, they're getting through the site. And so great collaboration, uh, between all of us to make this happen. Slana PD was, I think, happy that day to have a, a warm environment. It was during the, uh, the, the polar vortex, uh, a couple of weeks ago that they came over and, and, uh, did some training and, and, and videoed this. And so, um, many thanks to them, Slana Media Connection for editing and, uh, doing the voiceover for this video as well. So the link is on that, that slide. Um, like I said, it's on the Slana Media Connection. Um, it was also at the end of our FAQ Friday video that was published this past Friday. So you can go ahead and bring it down, Brad, since we're not getting the, uh, audio for it. And with that, I'll open up the questions.
So what we're doing is that the, right now at this time, that the mask order will remain as it has been and, uh, and we're just going down the road is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you, I've had a lot of questions here in the last week or two about the relaxing the, like, the fifty percent or the thirty percent of the, uh, if we're going to have a tournament or something at the field house everywhere, do you see that coming, going away shortly?
So as far as the mass gathering order, so of course the new one went into effect with those increased limits of, uh, uh, fifty people or fifty percent capacity on, uh, February twenty-second. It is set to expire on March twenty-first. Um, and so I anticipate at this point, if our trends continue how they are, that there is probably a high likelihood that we would be able to let that expire. That's given the trends continuing to improve like they are. Um, the mask mandate, however, I think that's probably still going to need to be in place for, um, a little while longer than that to ensure that we get a significant amount of the population vaccinated and to, um, ensure that we, um, don't have a, a spike from, uh, variants that show up if they do.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you, Jason.
Thanks, sir.
Hey. Next item.
Item number two, RFA one thirty dash twenty-one, bid award for traffic paint and beads with Justin Mater, county engineer.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Justin. Jason.
Well, I'm, I'm here to, um, like you said, to discuss the award for bid for traffic line paint and reflective glass beads. Uh, sealed bids were open on February twenty-fourth at eleven AM, and we did receive seven bids, and you should have, um, oh, the bid tabulations in your packet, which will show the details of all the bids. Slade County has a hundred and seventy-six miles of asphalt surface road. The bid includes two thousand seven hundred and fifty gallons of yellow paint, which will repaint the center line of all those roads. The bid also includes five thousand seven hundred and fifty gallons of white paint. Um, and, and with this volume, it'll cover about seventy-five percent of those roads. Uh, so our, our goal with the, um, with the striping is to paint a five-inch wide line at a twelve to fourteen mil thickness. So there are two alternatives shown on the bid. Um, alternate one meets the current KDOT specification, and it's also referred to as a high build paint, which will allow for a thickness of twenty mils. Um, this is what the Roden Bridge has, has used in the past, um, prior to, um, uh, last year. So alternate two does not require a specific polymer like the alternate one does. Um, and we allowed this alternate because we're not interested in having a traffic line thickness of that eighteen to twenty mils, and we hope this would significantly reduce the price. And so what, what we've done, um, last year and this year is we've had the two alternatives, um, just so we can kind of compare prices. And now that we're going through, uh, two years with, with having those options, probably what we'll do in the future is just bid out the, the alternate two. Um, the guys on the paint, paint truck were pretty happy with the paint that they received last year. Um, and so with, uh, being pleased with that paint and the reduced price in that, we'll probably just move forward with the alternate two, um, specifications moving forward. So the alternatives for action is to, um, one, accept the bids indicating the staff recommendation, or option two would be reject the bids. Um, staff recommendation for the yellow and white traffic paint, staff recommends to accept the low bid from Fogle Paint and Wax Company for the amount of eight dollars and thirty-four cents per gallon for the alternate two yellow paint, and eight dollars and thirty-nine cents per gallon for the alternate two white paint. For the reflective glass traffic bead, staff recommends to accept the low bid from Potters and, uh, Industries for the amount of thirty-three point nine cents per pound. Uh, the combined material will have a total expense of ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. Uh, so as far as the, the budget impact, uh, staff recommends that the funds, uh, to purchase the traffic painted and glass beads be taken from the paint and glass beads, uh, budget line item account. And this account has a current balance of a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Justin.
Uh-huh.
Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Commissioner Lee's here. Dustin, are there any qualities that we're ordering, a proposing order this year, similar to last year?
Yes, I, I believe it's very similar, but we're, um, I think we ordered, we added an extra tote. We bid, we bid out the paint and totes of two hundred and fifty gallons per tote. And I think we, we added one more tote, um, just to try to get a little, uh, one more tote of the white, just to paint a little bit more of the white, white lines.
And also are the prices, uh, any similar fluctuation in, in pricing?
Amazingly, they're, yeah, they're, they're a little bit lower than last year. Um, you know, so on the, on the paint and the, the glass beads.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
Any other comments?
Jason, Commissioner White here. Um, have you considered, um, utilizing, um, some different sized beads to, uh, put down on top for the ultimate of, uh, retroreflectivity?
Yeah, you know, the, the typical, the, the standard is, uh, what they call a seventy percent roundness. Um, and that's actually a smaller bead and, and before, even when I showed up, uh, this office bumped up to what we, what's referred to as the eighty percent roundness as a little bit more. You can go up to a ninety percent, which gives you a little more, more, more beads, but I guess I feel that, um, you know, we, we don't get, we, we don't, we wouldn't get the benefit of, of having a little bit, um, bigger beads and, and mainly because of our, our lines just don't last as long as what we would like. And mainly that's just because of the, the width of our pavement. Um, you know, our pavement is usually, you know, anywhere from twenty-two to twenty-four foot wide. And so you've got a lot of traffic driving on the beads, you know, and the more traffic that drives on the beads, the less it, it lasts, you know, because it just wears it out. Um, you know, also a lot of our roads, you know, have a chip sealed surface, which is a pretty rough surface. You know, and so you, you're not, I don't think we'll get the, the full benefit of, of going even more. And I think, I, I believe it gets quite a bit more expensive once you go up to the ninety percent roundness.
I see. Thank you, sir. I appreciate the info.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Any members of the public who wish to speak? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Commissioner Shadwick and Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bids as listed in RFA one-three-zero dash twenty-one as submitted.
Commissioner Lee, I second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we, uh, accept, uh, item number RFA dash one thirty dash twenty-one, bid award for traffic paint and beads. Are there any further comments? Seeing that, I will call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson? Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks? Aye. Motion passes. Four to zero.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Jason. We'll move on to the next item.
Informational items. Item number one, Roden Bridge update with Darren official administrator.
Good morning, Darren. Good morning. This is our month, or bi-monthly update for January and February. And our department responded to three snow and ice events using five hundred ton of road salt and about thirty-five hundred gallon of magnesium chloride. The magnesium chloride is a pre-wetter for the salt. When the temperatures get below twenty or twenty-five degrees, just plain salt, uh, doesn't activate at those temperatures, so we have to pre-wet it with the magnesium chloride. Um, I have some slides. If Brad could put those up there, please. This is an erosion control project on Woodward Road north of K four. Um, this is simply fixing some of the erosion around this culvert and leading up to it. Next slide. Next slide, please. We did receive our new John Deere excavator approved by the commission with a twenty-five percent matching, uh, funds from KDHE that arrived, uh, all late January. Uh, we are currently using the machine and part of that was, uh, next slide. In order to receive those funds, we had to demolish, uh, the old excavator, uh, due to the requirements of the Clean Diesel Act. Next slide. So part of it was removing and destroying the old engine block. Uh, next slide. And the chassis. We also had to break down the chassis. Next slide. Next slide. And so we did that, and, uh, all of that has been submitted to KDHE for reimbursement. Uh, we replaced a culvert on State Street east of Link Road. Next slide. Next slide, please. Next slide. This is a wooden box culvert that was damaged. Um, it was somewhere around the timeframe of the, the twenty nineteen flood. Uh, we finally got caught up and weather allowed us to go in there and replace this structure. Uh, next slide. The county engineer, um, looked at these back walls and determined that they were good and, and still had some life in them. So, uh, we looked around our yard. Next slide. And this, these are some, um, beams from a bridge that was replaced on Lapsley Road that we salvaged at the time. Uh, part of that contract was for the county to do the demolition of the bridge. We saved these beams here in our yards for future use. Next slide. So then we put this deck on here, and this deck was bought and purchased at, on Purple Wave. Next slide. And so that road was finally reopened. Um, so, uh, a lot of good through the use of salvaged material and benefit to the community. Next slide. We are continuing on with our winter tree work. Uh, these slides that follow just show some, um, various sites that we have, we have done. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide. As here we do, uh, this was an area down around, uh, Bavaria, uh, a line of side issue on a curve. Next slide. Next slide, please. This just shows some, um, how the encroachment, uh, onto the road, um, some of the trees can get. Next slide. Next slide. This shows is, uh, clearing the line of sight for a curve on North Street. Next slide. That's the end of our slides. Um, we did, uh, repair or replace a hundred and forty-nine signs and posts, and we did complete the yearly, uh, countywide sign inspection. Um, we hauled five thousand three hundred and fifty-five ton of rock, seven hundred ton of AB three, five hundred ton of sand, and, uh, one thousand two hundred and forty-two ton of salt throughout the whole winter. Um, the rural operators are performing laybacks in all of the territories. We do have plans this summer to rebuild two to three miles of roadway in twenty twenty-one. Those include a two-mile stretch at Simpson Road and the upgrade of Thatcher Road from earth to gravel. We're still continuing with our winter retreat, tree work and vegetation control. Uh, we do plan on shoulder edge wedge Brookville Road in twenty twenty-one, and we are bu- currently building a pond in exchange for dirt used to the yard. Our twenty twenty-one budget is, is in line with traditional amounts. I'm sure entertain any questions if you had any at this time.
Yeah, I'm, good, great job. It's been a, not too bad of a winter, but it's like there was times and issues once in a while.
Yeah.
And good job.
Thank you.
Any other thing? Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Next item.
Um, item number two, county administrators update with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Just a few things for this morning. Um, first off, if you hear a loud noise at ten AM, uh, it's a reminder that today is the siren test for the spring tornado season, and, uh, the sirens will be going off today at ten. Uh, secondly, a bit of information on the jail. Uh, the, uh, planned district development application was submitted to the city of Salina last Friday as scheduled. Uh, got confirmation on Monday that they received that. This afternoon, we will be meeting with the architect to review the schematic design in preparation for a presentation to your commission next Tuesday. And this Friday, we will be reviewing the programs area design of the jail um, with the former, uh, jail reduction committee folks who were interested in that. I hadn't planned on talking about legislation today, but just mention a couple of things. Uh, turnaround day in the legislature is coming up this Friday, which is the deadline for um, most bills to pass out of their house of origin. And so one of the things that we're tracking in addition to the, uh, budget bills and the appraiser bills that we've talked about before is some legislation that could potentially impact the Kansas Emergency Management Act. As you know, the legislature made some changes to that last year in their special session dealing specifically with COVID-nineteen. But they are, um, there are two competing bills, one on the Senate side, one on the House side that are working their way through the process right now that would make some longer term changes. And so, um, we are just, uh, trying to keep our arms around those and make sure that those will not significantly impact the work of the county emergency management office. And then the, um, the last thing I wanted to provide an update on, uh, today is our radio project. We'll be talking specifically about towers a little bit later as part of our study session. But I thought I would turn the mic over to Deputy County Administrator Hannah Stanbaugh just to update you on some of the non-tower pieces of what's been going on with that radio project. Hannah?
Thank you, Phil. Um, so we, I look back and the last time we actually did an update on the project was back on December eighth and quite a bit of progress has been made on the project since then. Um, just, so just to highlight a couple of things, we did have, um, a group of key staff members that are involved in the project that traveled just outside of Chicago back in December as a part of the requirement to, uh, the equipment access, acceptance to see our entire system set up in one location, to see it operational, to do several tests with it, just to ensure everything was working correctly before they packaged everything up and, and shipped it to Salina. All of that equipment related to the emergency communications project began arriving in Salina about the last weekend, December. We did the four, the final portable, mobile and radio counts that were completed. And about ninety-nine percent of all of that equipment has arrived. And one of the big major components of this project is, uh, thing called fleet mapping. Basically outlining talk groups or channels that are going to be used for communication amongst all of our public safety agencies here in Saline County. It was an extremely, extremely tedious task and we are very happy that we had a group of dedicated individuals and representatives from all the different public safety agencies that really, really did an excellent job working together to create that outline of a plan. Um, they shared information, they walked through different operational scenarios that, that helped kind of go into the development of that. Um, that process has been completed, uh, just in time for the mass programming of the new radios that's going to be occurring here uh, very shortly if it hasn't already begun. Um, another exciting thing is that the new console furniture for the nine-one-one dispatch center has arrived. It's been delivered, it's been installed. The dispatchers love it. It looks really good down there. Um, they're, they're very happy with it. Um, and the old furniture was repurposed. It was, um, taken down and then reset up at the backup dispatch center over at fire station number three. Um, all of the equipment installation on the radio tower that is located at the highway patrol is moving right along. All the structural studies have been done. Um, all the fiber has been tested. Everything's kind of basically passed with flying colors. That certainly helps with moving the project in the right direction. So just, uh, to give you a hint of what's coming up next, uh, this project is moving along pretty fast and one of the big key components is training. This is a brand new type of system that none of our public safety agencies have, uh, really operated on before. So this is a really big thing to make sure that everybody knows how to, how to use it. First up is our dispatchers. They're actually going to be trained next week. And then following that, uh, the week of March nineteenth through, or fifteenth through the nineteenth, we have got up to seventy-five individuals from the different public safety agencies across the county. They're going to be trained on mobile and portable radios. Um, we're really happy that Motorola worked with us. Uh, we were able to establish two evening classes that are specific to the volunteers in this county. And so our volunteer, uh, especially the rural fire departments who were really happy that we were able to accommodate them. So, um, that's definitely a good thing. Um, also coming up is going to be the placement of the monopoles that are at the main dispatch center and the backup dispatch center sites. And that is basically to help kind of complete that loop, um, between our main dispatch center and, uh, the KHP tower. Um, in order for us to cut over to a brand new, um, emergency communication system in late May, early June. So, um, really happy. I've had quite a few phone calls from the different public safety agencies. They're, they're getting anxious, they're getting excited to, to cut over to the new system. And as Phil said, we'll talk a little bit more about towers later on, but if you have any other questions about the project, please let me know.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Thank you, Hannah. Good, good report. Okay. And Phil, are you, are you done with your update?
Yes, sir. That's all I have for this morning.
Okay. Next item.
Item number three, commissioners' comments.
Any comments by the commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Next item.
Item number four, announcements.
And I apologize, last week I missed this part here. So it's like, hey, uh, any announcements? I do have an announcement. It's like, I think that we will be returning to our live next week. Our commission meeting will be held in room one oh seven downstairs and it will be on access TV. So I think we'll be going kind of back to a semi, uh, live mode next week. So the Zoom meeting will, I don't know, are we going to be? I, I, I don't know all the statistics here if it will be partially still Zoom or you can call in or, or what, but uh, I know that we will be live next week. So, any other announcements? Seeing, seeing no announcements or comments, I guess we can go into the study session.
Item number one, radio towers.
Okay. Hannah, it must be back to you.
Yes, thank you. Um, so in your packet was some informational, um, items in regards to the actual radio towers. Um, today we have invited a couple of members of our project team that are with us. So I'd like to introduce them. Uh, they are kind of our subject matter experts in regards to this particular project and are partners along with us. Um, so I have Alan Talkington with TUSA Consulting. I have Sean Gilmore with Motorola. David Blaha with Hayden Tower. Jeff Reckless with Motorola. And then we also have Mitch Walter with Gilmore and Bell on our call today with us. So just to kind of give you a little bit of information, history, and then I've got my subject matter experts that'll help kind of weigh in and, and fill some of the gaps that I, that I don't cover or to help answer some of the questions too. Um, so are, the contract for Motorola was signed back in September of twenty-twenty. Um, and this was to move to a new emergency communication system as a contract with Motorola. Um, parts of the migration to that system was for three radio towers to be installed in Saline County. So this, the three tower site system, um, is necessary to provide the ninety-five percent coverage guarantee that was required by our request for proposals and in the contract. This relates to portable on-the-hip radios. We're not talking like the mobile radio, um, coverage, but for all public safety agencies in Saline County. Um, this coverage is not only outdoor coverage, but it is also indoor coverage and includes coverage guarantees for several critical buildings countywide. Um, so with our partnership, this particular system joins along with the already existing state communication system that they have and we have the advantage of being able to utilize coverage that is already offered by the state towers that surround our county. But even with those surrounding state tower sites, we're, you know, we're able to oper- optimize our coverage. Um, but we still need that requirement for that in-building, uh, coverage such as inside houses, inside commercial buildings. Um, and so thus the need for our own tower sites within our county. Um, we did contract to have, uh, technology with our three sites that will function completely independently from the state system. Should something go wrong with the state system, should for some reason the state system go down in order for our public safety agencies in Saline County to continue operating independently from the state system. Um, so we definitely will go into the, to the sites just a little bit more, but I want to break there and ask if there's any questions in regards to the required coverage that's been established with our contract.
I don't have any.
Okay. Um, so I want to go into a little bit of the system design and this is definitely where, um, my, our, our team of folks here with us today can, can help us. Um, one of the tower sites of our three-site system is at an existing tower location located at the Kansas Highway Patrol Training Center. This certainly is an excellent tower site. It provides, uh, a lot of necessary coverage in, in our largest city or our largest population-based area. Um, and as part of the design and the coverage guarantee, um, there was one site that was identified that was needed in the western part of the county and then another one in the south-central part of the county. And as the original, um, informational briefing in your packet states, Motorola's, Motorola's original proposal utilized lease sites. And after our analysis, it really looked like there would be a lower cost over the projected life of the project to actually own and construct towers versus leasing them. The financing for this particular project through the Public Building Commission was based upon the assumption of site and tower ownership. The sites that were to be located in the western and in the south-central portion of the county were identified for several reasons. One of them being elevation, another being to basically the adherence of the coverage needs that Motorola is, uh, contracted to provide us. Um, access to power, um, the less reliance on lease sites and as well as some access to the sites. So our team can kind of explain just a little bit more about what goes into that optimal system design and the factors that play into the evaluation of a site. So I wouldn't mind if I could pick on, uh, both Sean and, and David. Um, Sean from Motorola and David from Hayden Tower to maybe talk a little bit more about how it is that, that we look at tower sites and, and really evaluate them for their effectiveness.
Sure, um, for those of you if you can hear me okay, my name is Sean Gilmore. I'm from Motorola. I'm the postal engineer. Um, from basically what Hannah's talking about, we look at towers basically, when we get a project, we look at what are your coverage requirements? In this case, you know, if it's ninety-five percent of a designated area, so in this case a county border. Um, we typically talk to the customer and ask, okay, do you have any locations already in mind? They present us with those locations and we have a tool called Hydra that allows us to insert all of the parameters, you know, what type of antennas to use, different lines and things like that. And we let it model what the coverage might look like. So typically that's where we start and then we ask, do you have any contingency sites in case for some reason the site doesn't work out? Because like, you know, we talked about now, sometimes people don't want it there. Uh, sometimes it costs too much and things like that. So that's how, where it basically starts with, uh, the initial design will start with the, you know, the optimal, like we've looked, there's nothing there. And then after that point, and once we determine the site, then we start the process of looking at like a loading analysis, seeing how much stuff is currently on this tower, if it needs to be reinforced, if some things need to come off. And that's typically where David's folks over at Hayden can come in. They can do, do that analysis or reach out and have that analysis done so we can see if that's a viable option. And then if we have to potentially move sites, um, we can, but then we have to relook at the covers to see if moving the site will affect it because depending on how far you move, that coverage footprint will change. So should sites move, the coverage footprint changes and we have to reevaluate, you know, what we were at versus what we're going to be at, essentially.
Thank you, Sean. Um, probably another thing to note, the reason as to why tower sites were identified in the western and south-central portion of the, of Saline County is strictly for the coverage piece of it. We actually have, um, I think really all but two of our rural fire districts that have primary response um, in both Ellsworth County, Dickinson County, Ottawa County that is required that they need to have coverage, um, in those areas. That is, that is, they are the first due units out into those different areas. So not only are we just looking at coverage that was required just in Saline County, but we have to think of the response area as a whole for all of our different public safety agencies. And that was a big factor as to why the different locations were kind of, were, were selected. Um, so we've, we have worked with Motorola. Um, we've looked at several different options, um, different sites and locations. Um, but so of course, you know, some of those discussions and some of those elements are going to have to occur in, in executive session as it does pertain to return client and then as well as land acquisition exemptions of, uh, the Kansas Open Meetings Act and we do have some of those scheduled. But, um, I certainly want to, uh, provide Alan Talkington with TUSA an opportunity. I think we've had many conversations that, um, even with the, the evaluation of sites, uh, he's told me several times that, uh, this is, any type of difficulties or challenges that we have with tower site locations, it's not something that's unique to just us. Um, he's definitely done more projects than I have, um, and has reassured me that this is not unique. Um, that there's, there's always challenges. Um, but it's, you know, it's, it's important that we've got a good team together that we can start running different scenarios and, and different options to, to figure out what is the best to comply with the contractual agreements that we have with Motorola. Um, as well as, you know, the, the, the financial bonding piece of it for the project. Um, but then also provide the, the best coverage possible for all of our different public safety agencies. Alan, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Uh, well, first of all, Hannah, I'd just like to say you've done a fantastic job at pointing out all the different key details. So kudos to you on that. Uh, I would say that additionally, um, pointing out the aspect of self-maintain, maintenance and, uh, usability and operation of the system has been key. Identifying these tower sites to know that, uh, should a power outage occur or some sort of, uh, an outage at the main site there at KHP, that your system can continue on. And that's an actual perfect example of what happened recently. There was an unplanned outage at no fault to the state, just a piece of equipment, uh, particularly a generator, uh, didn't operate exactly as was intended. And there was a, a short time period where I think there was a few issues on the state system. All that is to say that if you guys have, you know, when this is all said and done, the equipment that has been purchased, the Saline County users would have been able to continue on, assuming the tower placement was done as designed in the contract. So this is, uh, key to where the tower placement goes, to know that you have enough coverage in the county that should there be, as we said, some disconnect or an issue with the state, everything can continue with relative normal operation. So should that, uh, tower location change for one or both of these additional towers? And as Sean touched on, we're going to have to reevaluate, you know, not only i- in, uh, cooperation with the state towers, but even on your own, what those guarantees would be. So that way you don't have situations where there are big coverage gaps within the county because the towers have moved so drastically outside of their originally planned locations. But overall, as you stated, these issues are not anything new. Uh, just Kansas projects we've done recently, McPherson County, South U, Riley County, Miami County. All of those have had, uh, tower site issues where it was land acquisition, negotiation, communication with, uh, local citizens to make sure that their concern for- communication with, uh, local citizens to make sure that their concerns were met and addressed. So, uh, certainly, uh, these issues are not unique to you guys, and we have certainly gone through a lot of this recently within Kansas. And, uh, so I, I look forward to being able to talk more in detail about this, but, uh, these are all, uh, good, good conversations to have. And luckily, uh, Salina and Saline County in general has a lot of good, uh, options that can be discussed and choices that could be made. So, uh, that's really all I have to say on this particular time about that, Hannah, but uh, I think it's, we're in a good place.
Um, I guess at, at this point, I would like to know if any of the commissioners have any questions in regards to the history of the project, um, the system design, um, anything in specific, uh, before we would move into some executive session-type conversations.
Commissioner Shadwick, and I'm okay.
Commissioner Weiss, I'm fine with your explanation.
Commissioner Sparks, I'm, I'm look, ready to see what's ahead of us here. So, yep. Okay.
I have one question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner White.
Um, I, I don't know if this is Sean or, or whoever, but, uh, maybe they can answer it. What's the chances of cohabitating on some of these existing towers in order to supply the service that's required?
Are you talking about, uh, coming, uh, adding the new radio stuff to an existing tower in the area?
U-utilizing an existing tower?
Um, that's always a possibility. Um, that does fall into kind of what we touched on earlier of the location, you know, depending where it's at, that could affect it. Um, one other thing is using an existing tower, it always depends on what's on it. So if we have a certain required antenna height to meet the coverage requirements, and there's something already there, that could present issues. However, you know, we use existing towers all the time. Um, not saying it can't be done, it's just another one of the things that you have to look at, what's on it, how is loaded, would it need to be remediated, um, is there enough space and all that type of stuff? And then obviously, what other agreements need to be made with that tower owner to put things on there?
Commissioner, this is Alan Tockington with TUSA Consulting. If I may add a quick point to that as well. One of the tower sites we had considered as part of this was the south-central VCY America site, which is, uh, which has at that location an existing tower. Hannah has done some, uh, really good communicate, excuse me, communication work with the owners of that tower to find what the prices would be if we were to utilize that tower, and a lot of those, uh, financial aspects have been discussed internally and shared with comparison of leasing an existing tower versus building a tower. So certainly, that has had consideration, there's been discussions with Phil and with Hannah about that and myself. So, uh, we have looked at some of that, and there are pros and cons to that, that certainly could be discussed.
Hannah, this is Phil. Um, I think one other point maybe is that if we could bring Mitch into the conversation to talk a little bit about the, how the financing plays into this.
You were reading my mind, that was next. Um, yes, so we also have Mitch Walter from Gilmore and Bill, um, on the call with us today. Um, so if you could, you know, we went through the processes of establishing a public building commission for the purposes of financing this project. So the Public Building Commission certainly plays a very large role, um, in, in the finance and the, uh, the securities of this particular project. So I'd like for Mitch to kind of explain a little bit as to how we kind of came about this and, and some of our obligations on the county side to the Public Building Commission in regards to this project. Mitch?
Yeah, sure, thanks Hannah, I, I can do that, thanks Phil. Um, yeah, so the, him is correct, uh, of course, um, the, the Public Building, uh, Commission was created to be basically the conduit financing arm to provide funds for this project. Uh, the, the PBC is, was very involved on the front end as it was created and was actually the issuer of the bonds, uh, again, to, to, um, get the county the funds that it needed. For the financing, the security for the bonds, the repayment for the bonds, the PBC's bonds, is all centered on the lease between the county and the PBC, uh, under which the county leases property to the PBC, the project is constructed on that property, and then it's turned around and leased back from the PBC to the county through the financing lease. And the payments that the county makes to the PBC through that financing lease are the payments that need to be made to repay the bonds. So of utmost importance is that the county has a long-term property interest in the site, uh, or sites, uh, on which the towers go, because that's the property that actually secures the, um, the payments on the bonds. Meaning that, uh, it, when we started this project, we, we identified one site to which the county held fee title, and that was the anchor site, for lack of a better term. We, um, we drew up the documents so that certain other sites can be added to the lease, um, as and when acquired by the county, uh, and it identified for those additional tower sites. So the, the main point that we need to keep in mind here is that whatever the ultimate tower sites that are selected, the county will need to have either, um, fee title or a long-term leasehold interest in that property, it, to in order to the, um, to, in order to allow the lease to still be, secure the bonds and, uh, continue to provide the mechanism through which the county makes the payments to the PBC in order to pay the bonds. So whether it's a lease or the county owns the, the property outright, um, we, we will have to do some work with any of these additional sites to make sure that all the property interests align in order to make sure that the, the bonds continue to be secure obligations, which they are now. Uh, a-again, we did build information into the documents that the sites can be, um, added, uh, down the road. That's something that's actually common to these types of, of transactions. I think somebody mentioned earlier that, in, in their experience, the sites had moved around, um, as the project developed. That's been our experience too on the financing side, so we did add those provisions to the documents. But we do just need to make sure that, um, the county's property interest that it's going to be leasing over to the PBC remains solid.
Okay, thank you very much, Mitch. Are there any other questions that the commission has?
I don't have any at this time, I don't.
Commissioner Weiss, I don't.
Okay, then I think we need to, then at this point, go into specific discussion regarding individual sites, and that would be in executive session involving, uh, the commissioners, Hannah, myself, uh, county councilor, who is in the room with me, which is why I'm masked up. Uh, and then we might need some folks from Motorola or Alan to be in one or more of those executive sessions, so Hannah, if you could identify specifically who would need to be. And I think our first executive session would be, um, under the attorney-client, uh, privilege exemption to the Open Meetings Act, and would request 25 minutes for that one. Um, Hannah, who else needs to be in that one?
Um, I would request that Alan Tockington and David Blaha, um, be a part of that executive session to provide subject matter expert information as it pertains to the executive session.
So if the commission's agreeable to that, we'd need a motion and a second and a vote to recess into that executive session.
This is Commissioner Shadwick, and Mr. Chairman, I move we recess into executive session under the attorney-client privilege exemption to the Kansas Open Meeting Acts, 25 minutes, and reconvene in this room at 10:22.
Commissioner Weiss, I second the motion.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second on, uh, going into executive session for 25 minutes, and coming back into here at, uh, 10, roughly 10:28. So, uh, and I have a mission, and I will take a, ask for a vote, Mr. White, Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidriksen.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
We will go into, uh, executive session. Out of that executive session, and, uh, I know we need to go back into executive session again, so can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner White. I would strongly suggest, uh, we take a couple-minute break before we go into, in future executive sessions.
Sounds good. Okay, we will take a three-minute break and we come back in here at, uh, 10:28. Thank you. All right, we're back in session, and so, uh, we will be moving back into an executive session, and can I get a motion?
Commissioner Shadwick, Mr. Chairman, I move we recess into executive session under the land acquisition exemption to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, 10 minutes, and reconvene in this room at 10:40.
Commissioner Vidriksen, and I second.
Ask for a vote, uh, Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidriksen.
Aye.
Mr. Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks, aye. Motion passes five zero. We will now go into executive session, return back in here at 10:40. We are, okay, we are back in the light meeting, uh, and we're out of that executive session, and I guess we need to go back into the executive session again on land acquisition. I ask for a motion.
Commissioner Shadwick here, Mr. Chairman, I move we recess into executive session under the land acquisition exemption to the Kansas Open Meeting Acts for five minutes, and reconvene in this room at 10, uh, 10:46.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Can we have a motion and a second? I'll ask for a vote, Commissioner White. Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidriksen.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks, aye. Motion carries four to, four to zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, just as a note, uh, for this particular executive session, uh, we don't need the extra personnel of David Blaha or Alan Tusa, so just the commission, um, myself, uh, Phil and county council, please.
Okay. All right, we will be in the executive session for five minutes, reserving back in, uh, 10:26, 46. Okay. Back of session, and, uh, we need to go back into executive session again, and how much, Back of session, and, uh, we need to go back into executive session again, and how much, Hannah, on this one?
Same amount, 10 minutes.
Okay, we can go 10 minutes this time?
Or five minutes, sorry, five, I apologize.
Well, five minutes, do it?
Yep.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion to go back into executive session on land acquisition.
Commissioner Shadwick, Mr. Chairman, I move we recess into executive session under the land acquisition exemption to the Kansas Open Meeting Act for five minutes, and reconvene in this room at 10:50.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Commissioner Weiss, I second.
Okay, I'll call for a vote, Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Vidriksen.
Aye.
Mr. Shadwick.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks, aye. Passes five to zero, we would come back in here, uh, we'll go into meeting and come back out for five minutes. Thank you. We are back into regular session, uh, any other comments or stuff? Hannah or Phil, you, you had some stuff you wanted to discuss now?
Correct, uh, thank you, Commissioner. Um, so, um, as this particular project is concerned, um, it is our due diligence to ensure that we have looked at tons of different locations, uh, for towers, um, as well as being able to evaluate, uh, different properties. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I had contacted, uh, Alan Tockington with TUSA, our consultant, to aid us in looking, basically doing a scavenger hunt for us, uh, taking a look, um, to see if there's anything that we might be missing, um, any other locations that we should be looking at, um, and he has done that. Uh, one particular, uh, piece of property is actually owned by the county, um, it is a farm ground property that is off at Ohio, um, just south of Salem'sburg. Um, and that is one location that TUSA's, uh, TUSA's staff has, uh, looked at and evaluated, uh, through their, their engineering software that they have to look at coverage and everything. Um, initially, from TUSA's look, it certainly looks to be viable, um, all of that information has been shipped off to Motorola for them to take a preliminary look at, um, but that is certainly another location area that, that we're gonna evaluate and study to find out if would even be a viable solution, um, based off of, of where it's at, elevation, and all those other key components that are necessary to make sure that, that it would be a good site.
Gotcha. Okay. Good. Any other comments or questions? Is that pretty much it for the radio tower? Hannah?
That, that is, uh, that is the information that I have, unless any of the commissioners have any questions, we still have our team from Motorola and from TUSA that is, uh, present at the meeting, so this is your opportunity, if you have any specific questions about, about the system, um, about the engineering piece of it, anything that, that you can ask, uh, for any of these professionals that we have with us.
Okay. I just, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm good. If no other questions, is there any other comments? Any other announcements by any commissioners? No further business, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.